Where's Dex?
I just tried calling when he got him. All right, gentlemen, it's nine o'clock to open this call meeting for a planning session. Has it been advertised?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Turn it over to you and what it's agenda plan for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good morning to you. Hope everybody's doing well today and ready for another round of winter weather that we have no control over. Per the board's request, we put together some staff presentations for the board's consideration. These are not designed to be a budget work session. However, due to the timing of them, some of the information gleaned by the board could be used in the scope of developing this year's budget that's upcoming and also subsequent budget years. But we try to get the departments to make their presentations to where they were somewhat strategic in nature. You'll notice that all of them have the same format to where they talk about some of their metrics from the prior fiscal year or prior calendar year, and they talk about some of the recent accomplishments by their department, some of their short-term objectives, and some of the things that they would like to be able to do in their departments if they had the resources or the time to be able to do that. So, Mr. Chairman, that's a little bit of overview of today, and we try to schedule them about fifteen minutes apart, knowing some could go a little shorter, some may be able to go a little longer. And since we put our draft schedule together, we've heard from the sheriff, the sergeant-at-court clerk, and the sheriff that are not able to attend today. And there will be one more makeup session that we have, I believe it's next Monday afternoon. Yes, it's Monday, February twenty-fourth from two to five. And any gaps that we have in our schedule, anybody that wants to reschedule that's not able to attend today, we will be willing to accommodate them. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, that's a little bit of the overview of today, and our first presenter that we have is Mr. Emerson, representing emergency management by an EMS.
Okay. Good morning, Ken.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are y'all? It's good. You too, sir. We ready, Ashley?
Yes, sir. It turned off the...
It says on.
Well, I can just go through it for you if you'd like.
Sure. Click. Yeah, sure.
No, back.
That's not exactly what it looked like when I gave it to... That's all right. We're good.
They've still burned me up.
We're good. Because EMS is such a big deal for the county right now, I included some statistics related to that.
That's good.
Over the past calendar year, call volume has basically increased about ten percent. If you look back as far as 2018, that's the... As far back as I went, the increase has been almost fifty percent increase in the call volume. For last calendar year, just over ninety-one percent of the calls for service were answered by the career or the contract staff, and the volunteer staff answered eight point nine percent last year. Revenue recovery, I know that's a topic that's of interest. For the last calendar year, we brought in five hundred sixty-three thousand. For this current fiscal year, and these totals were through the end of December. First six months of the fiscal year was three hundred seventy-seven thousand, with a net collection percent of fifty-nine point seven.
That... Are those numbers, do they... So, they are net, as you said, they exclude any of the fees to the company that does the billing and that kind of thing? Thing that... Let's just make sure I understood it the way I was... So, you're... Looks like then that this fiscal year would be even better than last year. I mean, assuming that the second six months go the same direction.
We're...
I know.
We're hesitant.
I said the assumption, though, yeah.
The assumption, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's good. Good trajectory.
Yes, I think we're on schedule to certainly at least meet the budget that we presented.
I think sometime in the future... Sorry, and I know you do a lot of it. I don't ignore you sitting... I don't ignore you sitting there. I think sometime in the future, it'd be helpful for us to understand, like, what collections percentages are realistic, like, maybe, you know, compared to some other count. I just can say other because, like, you picked the sample that's a reasonable sample counties to compare us to. And, for example, Chesterfield's not always a good comparison, you know, but since this is fairly new to us, still the switch, you know, from to into the paid service and us dealing with revenue collections, I think, I doubt any of us know really what to expect from that or what's a reasonable target to hit. I certainly... I definitely don't know.
And we just put a blurb on there. We have three full-time staff now and seven part-time that are county employees. Recent accomplishments, I think everybody is familiar with the radio system. We've been working on that for just over four years now, and we... Public safety is live on the new system, has been live for almost two months, and the rest of the county agencies shouldn't be live by the end of this month. And we are still on schedule to finish, hopefully, within the first quarter of this year, within budget. Not yet. We also, this year, completed the state and federal licensing requirements for the EMS pharmaceutical program. This was something that was forced on us this year, and that has been a cost as well as a huge time commitment for the staff to work on. And in December, we hired the EMS captain, which, along with some part-time staff, has given us the availability of having a third ambulance most weekdays, which has already been very helpful to keep us from rolling calls over to mutual aid. What's next? Again, we've talked to most of you all in the past about the idea of transitioning from the contract staff to county staff. I think we've got most everything in place now so that we should be able to make that transition. We still need to have some discussions with each of you all to talk about staffing models, scheduling, deployment, things like that, that we need your input for. We will be implementing a new pharmaceutical program. It is a mandated thing. If we're going to continue to provide advanced life support, we have to do this. And the current date that the state has provided is April fifteenth. I think we're on schedule to meet that. Also, because of changes at the state level, the electronic patient care reporting system that we are currently using, we will lose the funding for that as of July one, so that will be another project that we're going to have to do prior to that.
Lose the funding if you don't switch, or you will lose the funding regardless?
The funding is going away.
Okay.
The electronic patient care reporting is a mandated thing that we have to do. The state has picked up the bill for what that costs in the past, and for whatever reason, they're not doing it anymore. So, that's going to be lumped on the county. We're no different than any other jurisdiction. It's on everybody right now. And certainly, over the next year, we're going to continue to work on making sure we're using the new radio system to the best of its abilities.
Have any of the counties talked about maybe, like, pooling resources together around any of these, like, whether it be the pharmaceutical programs or the electric... Electronic records? Is there any?
It's very difficult because of the liability issues and one county making a decision for another county. It's difficult to try to implement that. Challenges for our department. Just over the past few years, we've had a tremendous increase in responsibilities of what our department is responsible for, what we're being looked to provide, and we have a very limited staff to do that. That's been a challenge for us, particularly the last year. Additional challenges, I discussed the idea of transitioning the contract staff over to county employees. Like everywhere right now, we're concerned about being able to fill all the positions. That's no different than any of our neighbors. We're also... We're concerned about unfunded, unexpected, other state or federal mandates that may come down with little to no warning, such as the pharmaceutical program, the patient care reporting, and whatever else. That's a concern. Should we not transition from the EMS contract staff? We also have the potential for unexpected mid-year price increases from that vendor. Again, if we could transition away from the contract staff to county staff, we would eliminate that. As I mentioned at the beginning, the call load for fire and EMS is continuing to go up, and I don't see any change in that for the future, which is going to put increased loads on both county staff as well as volunteers. Other challenges for us include space for apparatus, particularly ambulance space right now is becoming critical. Amelances are larger than what the current building was designed to hold, and we're going to have to come up with a solution to that to get those apparatus out of the weather. It's not a good thing to keep a half-million-dollar ambulance sitting out in the weather, and we're not able to keep it fully stocked and in service if it's outside. Another challenge for us would be the lead time for ordering, whether it's amelances or fire apparatus, the fire department has the same issues. It's off the bottom of the screen there, but it's about twenty-four to thirty-six months ahead of time before that's the delivery on a new ambulance or fire apparatus. So, we need to be looking three years down the road. And I know that's difficult for us. That's difficult for you all. That's just the way it is right now, and that's the way it's been for a while. We ordered an ambulance two summers ago, and it's not due to be delivered until the latter part of this year or early next year. Do you all have any questions for us? We've had a lot of communications over the past six months. I think most of you all are up to speed on most of the challenges that we have already. I don't think they're going to go away. They're going to continue. Again, we hope to meet with you all individually to discuss your thoughts on how we transition from the contract staff to county staff. I think that it'll be a better service. We'll have more control.
Just got to find the people.
We have to find the people. That's a struggle for everybody right now.
Have you talked to the planning district any about possibilities of grants for any of these things, including with the bill? I'm thinking really around, like, you know, potentially space, like buildings, something like, you know, short-term.
We talk to them on a pretty regular basis. They're good at providing... When they see opportunities, they share those with us and our surrounding counties. It's... There's not a whole lot of grant money available for infrastructure-type equipment, things like that. There are usually special projects here and there that you can tap into, but for buildings themselves, it's... At least right now, it's not much available.
I wasn't aware of something either. I just... I think it's good that you're keeping the lines.
We do talk to the CRC on a regular basis.
Long as you're keeping lines of communication open.
Yes, sir.
That's all we could ask for. Thank you. Yeah. Are these slides... These slides going to come to us? Or are they posted already?
They're not posted already. I'm getting them.
That's fine. I just... I want to grab some of the data from you. This was good. This was good. This was good stuff.
If you have other questions about the data, we can overload you with data if you want.
No, I actually just like to share some of it with some of the citizens, just because I think it is... I think it is really helpful. It's obviously a big driver of our increase in costs, and I think helping them understand some of the volume increases, I think, is good for all of us.
We still have an active volunteer base, and they... We want to keep those. They're a huge value.
Yeah.
The requirements for someone to be able to do that has steadily increased over the past twenty years and continue to increase, and that absolutely impacts the availability of people to volunteer.
Yeah.
Thinking that if you all can figure out a solution to the volunteer program, if you can figure out a way to sell that, you'll make a million dollars. Everybody's struggling with the same issue. It's not just us. It's not just Virginia. It's everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we have the school board next.
All right. Before we go, I'd talk...
Thanks, Kent.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Talk to you in a little bit.
Yes, close talk.
Good morning.
Good morning. Be glad to... Yes.
Sorry, she looks like she was going to say something to us about... So, I was tossing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a mental morning already.
I saw. Nothing like unexpected fire alarm for you.
That's right. Right as you're trying to get students into the elementary school, right? Fortunately, it was just a issue with the smoke detector. Sometimes those things are faulty, or they give you a false alarm, but better safe than sorry. Everything worked out okay, so our students are back in the building now. But thanks to our local fire department.
Good.
So, I'd like to start off with some facts and statistics. Some... First of all, you have demographics related to our students and our staff. Of course, this changes a little bit each year. These are the most current for this school year. You also have some postgraduate data. At the end of each year, we ask students, you know, what are their plans as they leave the high school, and you can see the numbers and the percents of students going to a four-year college, about forty percent, twenty-one to a two-year, ten percent into trade schools, a twenty-one percent into employment, four percent into military, and four percent undecided. So, some information about over the last four years where our students have gone after graduation. Then you also see three years of post-COVID student performance. It has been a challenge for those students who were in school during the COVID years, about a year and a half there, and we continue to work on helping our students fill some of those gaps.
Chronic absenteeism number looked much better this year, though, than...
Absolutely, and that is the first thing on the next page.
Can't flip ahead yet. Okay, sorry.
Absolutely.
Well, that's the one that stood out to me in that bottom chart, though.
Yes, so with COVID came many people getting used to staying home, and as you know, both parents who are employed and stay at home and parents, you know, worrying about their children getting sick or being sick and keeping them home more frequently than in the past. So, and it's not just an issue in Amelia. It has been an issue across the state and across the nation. So, one of our most recent accomplishments is a significant reduction in chronic absenteeism for students and setting up those systems. We have established a system. We call it a STAT meeting. It's a student-teacher assistance team, and we use that to address student absenteeism. We use it to address student conduct issues, and we use it to address academic issues as well. And it brings together the school officials, counselors, teachers, and parents to work all for a common good of helping a student through any of those particular challenges. And so, we have seen great success with that process, not just with our chronic absenteeism, but addressing students who are having academic or conduct challenges as well. As you're probably aware in the media, we've had successful implementation of our new cell phone policy that's, you know, off and out of sight during the school day, from the first bell to the last bell. And even when we first started this year, we had no more than about five issues a day, and so, we've had very good success with that.
I'll talk... Can I comment on that?
Yes.
When this thing, when the cell phone policy first started, I got a lot of calls until I realized. And I think people... It wasn't... But you can't take... It wasn't that you can't take it. It's still...
Mm-hmm.
It's not that your child won't have a cell. It just... It can't be laying on the table.
Right, yes.
I think that calmed a lot of people down, but...
Some school districts have policies where students have to put them in a pouch during the day. They have to be carried in their backpack. Our policy says they have to be turned off. They have to be out of sight. Okay, so that doesn't mean that a student can't carry it on their person, which is not permitted in some school districts. So, they just have to be turned off, and so, they can't be visible hanging out of the back pocket or something like that. I think that helps some parents to realize that if there's an emergency, you know, certainly, we encourage them to use the office phones, but parents still could get ahold of their student if they needed to. So, we also have implemented the Virginia Literacy Act, which provides tutoring support for students. We have the Virginia, All-in-Virginia Funds that we are using to provide that. It is a grant. The grant will expire after next year, but the intent is to help students to recover from that COVID learning loss. We've also made facility improvements, including the car and bus loops at the elementary school using grant funds and painting of all three schools over the last three years, and we used end-of-the-year unexpended funds that were granted as carryover to help take care of our facilities. And they will say that from about 2020, for about three years or so, we were able to use the unexpended carryover funds to help with a lot of facility improvements that are needed as we face our aging buildings. So, that has been nice when we have had those funds. We also have a workforce development program at the high school, and that is supplemental responsibility for one of our teachers. We would love to have a full-time person doing that, but at this point, we have one person who works, like, after school. But at this point, we have one person who works like after school to help get students into businesses and getting that workforce experience for our high school students. We have developed and implemented a strategic plan. That strategic plan was developed a few years ago. It goes through 2027. It was developed with the community, was a very large group of individuals from the schools, parents, school board, the faith community. We had businesses. We had a lot of people on that strategic planning committee. And we are still reporting biennially on the results of of what we've done with that plan. We also have initiated a community roundtable to engage businesses in our schools. And I brought some of our flyers for the next upcoming event. Something we've started this year. We've already had two community roundtable meetings. And we have another one coming up on March 5. And and the intent of this is to engage the business community in collaboration with the schools. We have some students who have internships or externships in local businesses. And this also helps to improve our communication with the local community. We have implemented a Grow Your Own Teacher Program. We have Teachers For Tomorrow at the high school. And they've already signed some seniors when they have graduated, offering them jobs when they finish their four-year degree. We'd love to see our own students stay home, come back here and teach here. We've created an aspiring administrators program. One of the things that we saw, that I saw early on in 2019, 20 was that many of our administrative candidates who were in Amelia didn't have the opportunities that candidates coming from larger school divisions had when it came to interviewing for administrative jobs. And so we have had an aspiring administrators program now for several years, has been very successful. And we give these teachers an opportunity to have some administrative experiences during the regular school year. And then finally, we received and implemented a school-based mental health grant. We're one of the few school districts in the state of Virginia to have received that. And that provides additional support for our students in all of our schools. So what's next? We are also in the first year of implementation of what's called the Comprehensive Instructional Program, or CIP curriculum. Region seven schools developed this curriculum, and it has been very successful with those school districts. So we are in region eight, and we have been, we have partnered with region seven to bring this curriculum basis to our teachers and our schools. And we have seen, we just gave a report at the last board meeting on how our students are doing with some of those benchmark assessments, and we are seeing growth. So this is our first year, and we're excited about what this may bring for our students. We're also working to increase and improve CTE offerings for students. That's career and technical education. We've placed a large emphasis on career and technical education over the years and want to continue to offer not only things at Amelia and Ottawa Technical Center or at Bright Point, you know, Community College, but within our own school division. We have a fantastic agricultural program, and we're looking to expand into other CTE areas. We're also working with the community to build mentorship programs for our students. And I'm going to hit on planning for and building a new school. This has been on the CIP budget for many years, and it keeps getting pushed down on CIP. But with the development that is coming to Amelia, and I'm sure that that you are aware of what's happening both in in the village here soon, in South Redfield and in other proposed areas. It is time that we need to begin looking and planning for a new school for a couple of reasons. First of all, we will see an increase in the number of students. All you have to do is look to our east to see what has happened there. Our schools, especially our elementary school, is at capacity. Our high school struggles with space. And our middle school, as many of you know, is very, in a very old school. And it's not getting any younger. So it is time to begin planning for building a new school. It is a mini-year process. I would tell you it's a five- to seven-year process. And it's a multimillion-dollar process that you need to begin thinking about now. If you wait until you're overcrowded, then you're looking at another five to seven years beyond that. So. And then also what's next is to continue our ACPS Grow Your Own Programs with our Teachers For Tomorrow. Tuition reimbursement programs for staff that allow them to get credentials as well as to add credentials to what they already have so that they can teach in multiple areas and fit the needs of the division. And then continue our Amelia aspiring administrators program. So opportunities and departmental challenges. Staffing our schools during a national teacher shortage is a huge challenge. And we've been very fortunate because we take a very personal approach to recruiting and to retaining. You know, we're doing retention interviews, not just exit interviews with our staff to try to find out why our staff like to stay in Amelia and what we need to do to continue to encourage people to stay in Amelia. But when somebody can drive 10 minutes and get $8,000 more a year in their salary, it makes it very difficult for us to maintain our current staffing. So that is one of our largest challenges is is staffing. I will tell you, when I was a high school principal, I had 80 applicants for one history teaching job. Now we are lucky to get one applicant. So times have changed. So also a challenge is offering competitive salaries and affordable health insurance. While we are no longer the school district with the highest health insurance costs, we were for many years, up until like last year. So we are still working to get the health insurance costs down for our employees. And, you know, that is all a factor of funding and then, of course, usage of the health insurance. Maintaining our aging facilities as we prepare for the future has also been an emphasis for us. As I mentioned earlier, we were using some of our unexpended carryover funds to try to maintain our buildings. But that is, it still remains a challenge for us. Parent engagement. So as time has passed, parents tend to be more engaged in what's happening in their home than what's happening at school. And while we've always seen a change from elementary, parents with elementary children being very engaged to being less engaged at high school, we see far less parental engagement overall in schools. And it's not just in Amelia. That's a common trend. So getting those parents engaged in what's happening in the schools is really important. And then finally, maintaining grant-funded initiatives. When CARES Act, when the ESER funds and all of those funds came in recent years, many school divisions use those funds to fund people. And fortunately, we did not do that. However, some of our grants do require that, some of our current grants. And so the All-in-Virginia Grant that provides that tutoring assistance expires in June of 2026. Our school-based mental health, our social worker, the grants and funds, our social worker and and one of our school counselors expires in December of 2027. And expanded after-school programs, many of you may remember when you're in school, a lot of times there were programs after school. We only have Title IV that we can use for that, which is extremely small amount of money. But those after-school grants that funded after-school programs have expired. So. So those are the challenges that we are currently faced with besides smoke detectors that go awry on a Monday or Tuesday morning. So. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have and.
You mentioned a new school.
Yes, sir.
Which, which?
So I've had some minimal conversation with the school board. What I would recommend would be a combined middle-high because of the cost-effectiveness of that, where you have one cafeteria. And many of those buildings are built so that high school's on one side, middle school's on the other side of the building. Then you have a shared cafeteria. You so you might have eating spaces that are separate, but you have one large kitchen. You have several different, like a media center, library that's shared, a shared auditorium. And so that would be my recommendation because that's where many school districts have gone for cost effectiveness. And so it's a combined school. Then you could have the elementary school remain for young children, pre-K through second or so. The high school could be used then for a 30 through 5 school. As as those numbers of children are expanding, you need the space to go. So something along those lines, certainly an architectural study that says this, you know, we did one several years ago that said how much life is left in in our buildings. But even that study suggested it was time to start thinking about the future.
And I think that's exactly what you mean. It's not like right now we need to say, you go build, put all the money to building. But you need to put the money to doing the plant, doing the planning. And so you go ahead and put out and have a have professionals come in and say, what's the size you're going to need? What is? I mean, that's a theory, but we're not the expert.
Right.
Pay for that kind of thing. Pay for then, where where would you put it? Would you tear one down? Would you need a relocation, et cetera?
Right.
Yeah, if we don't start, we're going to be way too far up down.
Exactly, exactly.
Get the age of the buildings you have now.
I can certainly get those for you. Mr. Lynch was going to join us today. Unfortunately, his father passed this weekend. And so he's not able to be here today, but I can get you the age of the buildings, certainly.
Maybe max capacity.
Yeah.
He passed?
Yeah.
You want to push it again?
Electronic version of this one. I want to get the Chamber of Commerce to put an ad on this one.
And then we did send a copy to them.
All right. I haven't seen it pushed. This is if you.
But yes, I have to do that.
Tonight. So if you send it to me, I'll make sure we get it out.
Absolutely. And I can get you the capacity. The thing to remember is that there are state codes that talk about how many students can be in a class. Like any English class can have no more than 24 students. So when you create schedules and you cannot have more than a certain number of students in particular courses, there is a ripple effect in terms of of other class sizes. So even if, say, a classroom could hold 28 students or 30 students, was not permitted instructionally by state code. So that's something to keep in mind as as you look at those numbers. And at the elementary school, we have a requirement of 1 to 23 per class.
Well, maybe that's what you mean when it's capacity. Maybe that's what you need to think about is.
Certainly. There's fire capacity, and then there's instructional capacity.
Yeah, I think it's more realistic to provide instructional capacity. Yeah.
Right. Certainly. Any any other questions or any other information you'd like? Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Lemon. Thank you.
See you next week. Well, or maybe, maybe tomorrow?
We'll see. Yeah. Make a decision soon.
Have the extension office next.
All right.
Hello.
Hey there.
Just pulling another, yes, chair up you guys, both of us today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Brought just some. My goodness, this floor is slippery. Let's not start this by crashing. Well, good morning. We are from the extension office. I know L K and I have both worked with a lot of you, or all of you, I guess. I'm Mackenzie Gunn. I'm the Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent. I'm also the unit coordinator as of a couple of weeks ago. L K Mondry is our four-H agent in the office. And then Jane Henderson, who was the Family Consumer Science Agent for many years, I think close to 20 years, retired at the end of December. So that position currently is vacant. I guess I have our clicker. Sorry, I thought Ashley.
I don't think you have to click anywhere particular. I think you could just, yeah.
Sorry.
Not all, yeah. A little odd. And then we have a new AFA, Takesha Bragg, who started just about a year ago, and she filled the position that Janet Cruz was in for many years. So our office has had a lot of turnover in the last three years. But it's been fun to, you know, be in this office and in the county and and doing the work that we're doing. So I handed out our ROI sheet. This comes out at the end of every year. It's the colorful one. I'm not sure if you all got this at the end of last year, so I wanted to print it out and make sure that you had it. In 2024, the ROI that was calculated for our office was $2.61 for every county dollar invested. I just wanted to make a note on that. Our 2024 volunteer hours on that sheet totaled $77,000. Those numbers are all calculated off of 2023 data that we input. So last week, actually, L K and I went through and had to submit all of our volunteer hours for 2024. And between the two of us, we had almost 6,000 hours of volunteer hours, which would total over $200,000. So the numbers on this sheet are more from that 2023 timeframe. So I think that they don't quite reflect the work that our program has put in and the the growth that we've had over the last, the last year especially. So just a note on some of the ROI numbers. We also did a situation analysis in 2023. That was a survey that went out to the community to get an idea of community needs and see what our office can address. It comes back with a whole list of different things that the community feels like is important, but narrowing it down to what the extension office can actually work on. The top four needs were youth, which was leadership, money habits, and adult mentoring, agricultural resiliency, and some of the top themes in that were controlling invasive pests, strengthening local food systems, ag profitability, and then agriculture and natural resources literacy. We also had preserving natural resources, which was maintaining or improving water quality and habitat as well as that agriculture and natural resources literacy. And then the last topic was community, which was improving quality of life through things like money management, being able to identify and prevent identity theft, and then parenting skills as well. And then also, our office, especially in the last couple of years, has done a lot of cultivating community partnerships. So L K and I both work a lot with other. So L K and I both work a lot with other organizations in the county. We work with the library quite a bit for programming. The Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District, both with programs, and I sit on their board. N R C S, the F S A Office, Department of Wildlife Resources, D C R. The, all of the public schools, Amelia Academy, Amelia, Amelia Area Cattlemen's Association and James River Buffa Association are just some of the other organizations that we do a lot of partnerships, programming, community events with and things like that. State parks as well. So some of our recent accomplishments in our office. From the Ag and Natural Resources side, in two thousand and twenty four, I hosted fifty two different educational programs. Not all of those were in Amelia County. A lot of them are partnerships with surrounding counties. So may have been held like at the Southern Piedmont Research Station down in Blackstone. Or statewide programs. I had ninety two site visits and a lot of those were actually with new contacts. So producers that I hadn't worked with in the past, new homeowners, people who were moving into the county. Wanting to start small farming operations or gardens or things like that. And then I went to eighteen different professional development activities in the last year. I also was able to secure forty seven thousand dollars of support for my programs. Both through in kind and monetary donations towards specific programs. I wrote a grant that was finished in two thousand and twenty four. That provided about five thousand dollars for folks in the Amelia Area Cattlemen's Association to do some genetic testing on their herds. To see whether or not that avenue was something that was going to be profitable for them in the long term. And then about thirty three thousand dollars towards livestock handling and precision, precision ag. Technology through the Tobacco Commission. And then in this last year, I was, applied for and was accepted into the Virginia Agricultural Leaders Obtaining Results. Which is a two year fellowship leadership program. That will allow me to travel throughout the state to see agriculture in different areas. Make connections and sort of cultivate a, a network around Virginia. But also will do some traveling domestic and some international to kind of learn about the food system and how that connects to Virginia's agricultural. I guess to Virginia agriculture, yeah.
So four H positive use development is what I do. This is kind of just a snapshot. I think I might have low balled it a little bit. But this past year I did sixty four in school programs. I had nineteen, nineteen different community events that I was part of. Nineteen camps and some of those were day camps, some were overnight at the different four H centers. Fifteen professional developments and twenty district or state level four H events. My camping numbers doubled from two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty four and hoping to double that number again as I get back in schools. And kids can kind of put a face with a name. I applied for and received Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant in partnership with Family Learning Services. Some of you all may know Robert, Roger Penholster and also Piedmont Soil and Water. So we got a grant for about forty five hundred dollars to work with. We work with four teachers at A C P S now. One at the elementary, two at the middle and one at the high school. Providing them with training and support throughout the year as they complete meaningful watershed education experiences with their students. And we've applied for that to continue this year as well. I started and implemented a fishing one on one hooked on fund program with all of sixth grade at the middle school. So I go in, it's ten sessions and we do knot tying and fishing regulations and those kind of things at school. And then culminate with an in person field trip or field day at Twin Lake State Park. That was very successful. Dr. Ray is very happy with that, so we're continuing that program this year if the weather will let us get back in school. The National Archery in Schools Program is a fantastic program that we were able to, I was able to get instructors trained at Amelia Academy and at Amelia Middle School. So all sixth and seventh graders at Amelia Middle School received archery instruction this fall. They have all the equipment for free, all the training was for free. And I go in and support them as an archery instructor myself. And we're looking to build on that and start a competition team next year. And then I was just awarded the two thousand and twenty four Conservation Educator of the Year from Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District. And it's not on there because I just found out yesterday, but I was also just accepted into. Virginia Cooperative Extension has a leadership development program that will kick off next week. Office collaboration, collaboration. So Mackenzie and I do a lot of programming together, especially in herpetology. That's a passion of both of ours and national, natural resources programming. In two thousand and twenty four, we reached over two thousand students in the area through our programming. We also did an after school program at the elementary school this year as a kid for nurse program. We had ten students in fourth and fifth grade. And our, our club met six times over the course of three months. And seven of those kids sold at the Amelia Christmas Craft Show, donated twenty five percent of their earnings back to the Christmas mother. So for a total of a hundred and thirty dollars, they all want to do the program again, so we're looking at doing that again this spring.
Some exciting work. Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah.
Great results.
Spent a busy year, but it's been a lot of fun. Um, all right, so coming up for this year, one of the biggest things as an office overall that we're hoping to do is to reestablish an extension, extension, Leadership Council. Ooh, I'm just going to keep tripping over that word. Amelia V C E has had a E L C in the past, but it's been many years. We started to put one together a couple of years ago and just never really got a lot of traction on it. So L K and I are really excited about that. It's bringing in stakeholders from the community to sort of act as a guide for us as far as our programming. Kind of ears in the community that can help us identify needs and, and see where we can be most effective. So we're really looking forward to, to starting that backup and hope it will be a really, a really positive input to our programming and impact on the county. As far as A and R, I have a lot of upcoming program that's already in the works and things pop up all year round. So this is definitely not an exhaustive list by any means. But we're doing a big push on agribusiness management programming this year. So we have a workshop coming up in Blackstone for the surrounding area at the end of March. I'll continue a lot of the farm transition and heirs property workshops. I didn't put that on my accomplishments, but I worked with a team from V S U this year. On heirs property on a statewide level and reached close to three hundred people that came to our array of workshops for that. So that's been a really impactful programming that's been, been great to be a part of. Also continuing with crop and forage specific workshops, pesticide recertifications. And then I do a lot of work on a statewide level with women in agriculture as well as homestead and food safety related programming. So there's been a big need in the last few years from folks who are wanting to start homesteads or small farms, things like that. So we've really done a push to try to work on especially food safety stuff with that demographic of people. Because I think there's just a lot of misinformation out there. So as a whole, extension is trying to step up a little bit to be an educational resource for those people that, that want to, want to do that type of ag. So that's just a small sampling of some of the things to come this year.
Is it just two of you all?
Right now, it's just the two of us, yep.
I don't have time to do anything else.
We fit it all in.
So four H, Junior Camp is a week long overnight camp, a week camp at Holiday Lake Four H Center. There are six four H centers across the state. We camp at Holiday Lake in Appomattox. And that's like our big thing that we have, that all of us as agents have to do. So looking to grow Amelia camper numbers back to seventy five to eighty campers. Those are ages nine to thirteen. And part of that is building an active teen program. Partnering with Amelia County High School, talked to Mr. Ringstaff last week about possibly coming in during club time or maybe doing an after school program. But I'm actually going after this to go interview some teens. We have teen training this weekend. Teens that volunteer at camp and adults have to put in a certain number of hours throughout the year before they're allowed to supervise our younger campers. So it's, there's a lot that goes into that. Continuing the fishing and archery programs at the middle school, those have a lot of potential. The seventh grade that participated in my program this past year with fishing is actually going to Virginia State to Randolph Farms on March seventeenth. So they're kind of doing the extension of what they, what they learned last year. And so they'll be doing a rotation again, fishing in those ponds at Randolph Farms, tubing the farms and doing some other, other activities. Increasing my in school programming at Amelia County Elementary School, typically with four H, we go in once a month and do in school programming. That supports the curriculum that's already, already happening, especially science and STEM with fourth and fifth grade. So looking to, to really get in and do that this next year. And then increasing our natural resources and ag literacy programming. All right, our opportunities and department challenges. Obviously, we are down one person with our Family Consumer Sciences position being empty right now. We do hope to fill that in the future. We don't know when that will be. So in the meantime, we will assist with the continuation of nutrition, financial and childhood development programming in the county. Available programming and meeting spaces for us. There was a meeting space for the office until early two thousand and twenty two, which was prior to my coming in. So there have been scheduling conflicts and limited options for where we can meet. We try to utilize the conference room over at the library, but that's really hard to get booked. We have booked this room before as well, but then schedule changes and we end up having to find somewhere else to meet. So, so meeting space is a, is a big thing for us. We are working on reconfiguring our kind of break room into a small meeting space in the meantime. Teen counselors and adult volunteer recruitment and retention has been a challenge as well as people have limited time available. And teens have jobs and things after school or they're involved in a million other things. So that is something that I struggle with, with that recruitment. Program and professional development funding opportunities. We get about six hundred dollars a year for professional development through Virginia Cooperative Extension. Our program funding is self funded through previous, previous program funds, development or community sponsorship. But it can be challenging if we have to charge for meals or space rental fees or transportation. Which leads into the last one. Transportation is a challenge for us. There are other. V C E has a few vans throughout the district that are housed, ones in Nodaway, that one's getting ready to be surplused. There was one in Prince Edward we could borrow. That one has been moved. So having a van allows us to transport kids who don't have that transportation, just provides for more opportunities. Mackenzie also uses a van for, for her programming as well for adults. So just looking at ways to kind of increase our opportunities. Do you want to add to that?
I don't think so.
So I asked about this van and Mr. Lynch told me that they, I wouldn't be allowed, we wouldn't be allowed to drive, so we'd have to pay for a driver. So we could use the van, but we'd still have to pay for a driver.
And we're hoping, we've been talking with our district director about the need for a van housed in Amelia County. So we're hoping that we can make some headway with that, especially now that the two counties closest to us that had vans that we could go pick up are now gone. So, but nothing, nothing really in the work. That's been kind of a struggle for us for a while. But we continue to push on that, on the V C E side of things, but.
We use the buses for summer camp transportation from the school. It just means I have to increase the cost for camp in order to cover the, to pay for the gas and the, and the drivers.
Up to school or up to camp?
We have to pay for that. They do, yes. But we, we pay for the, for the mileage and for the drivers. And camp costs increase, just like everything else, so.
So you want to increase the number of boys campers? What is it now? I mean, it went from seventy five to eighty, I mean.
Well, so when I, the, two years ago, there were twenty five campers, four teens and an adult. And so last year we doubled that. It took sixty total. So I'd like to get up to seventy to eighty five. The camp can hold two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy five if all the beds are in, are, are filled. We camp with Cumberland, Nodaway and Nelson. So the four counties divide, we kind of divide out evenly. Until us, until a certain cutoff date and then we open it up to everybody.
So there's still, there's an interest of people going for it.
Yes, yes. I think what happened is because the position was vacant for a couple of years and they weren't really seeing a four H agent combined with COVID. And camp being closed for a year, we're just steadily increasing the numbers back.
Don't have a cell phone tracks number, Lee.
We do not. Although they have just put in a new tower, from what I understand, so there's more reception than there used to be. No, we're at Holiday Lake.
Oh, you're at Holiday?
Yeah.
Okay.
That does help. Yeah, limit the cell phone reception.
Yeah, it's a bad area there.
All right. Well, thank you guys for your time.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have a, is that too?
One thing.
Well, triple duty.
If, uh, if you need money for like these four H trips and stuff to fund the, pay it for driver and all that. Tell me the businesses. There's businesses out here that are dying to give money to good causes.
Yeah, I haven't done a great job of asking for money this past year, but yeah, I'm getting better.
Call me if you need it.
But there are local farms that actually help contribute and sponsor kids and stuff as well.
There's people out here that.
Yes.
That'll spread the money around to where it's going to a good cause and the kids is, is a good cause, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the Chamber of Commerce would be a good one to connect with.
If you needed to make a phone call, if you have to call, we can get it. I don't mind making phone calls.
We could help communicate that through the Chamber of Commerce.
That would be great, yes, absolutely.
Not the chamber itself necessarily.
Right, right.
Communicate through the members what opportunities exist for sponsorship, so.
We can probably get some from our chairman too, if you need it.
So, you know, the track, obviously you know tractor parade's coming up. After the tractor parade, we're doing the community, by community bash. It's a farm, farm event. And the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring, sponsoring that. Get a great place, maybe for all of us out.
You get the big chair.
That's that mid farm coming in his.
Yeah.
Have other work levels that full weekend.
Yeah, I had to help the church. And talk to my horse lover. Do you guys need a break?
I'm actually out of town that particular weekend myself, so.
Well, thank you.
Intermittent break.
It's okay.
Do any moves?
How's Dexter doing this morning?
You know, I got to twenty six, you know, that's not bad.
We've had all the switching around we've had to do. Understandable. It's all good.
Life happens, especially in the farm getting ready for winter.
All the changing.
I know.
I just got some from my hush later. They ain't pretty good. I just got it.
Oh, that's the packet. That's all the stuff I just got this morning.
It's just the files.
Yeah, it's just the files. The agenda was sent out earlier, but yeah. The agendas were mailed out and everything, but it was like mailed out at the beginning of the month. Yeah. But no, the packets, a lot of them just came in this morning, so.
That's why I just wanted.
While you guys were doing this.
I just wanted to copy some Kent's data to put out. That was the only reason.
Yep, and it's also available on the website already too, including what the extension office.
So I just, I don't Facebook forum to hopefully. Well, and as I said, we don't, we know this, but I mean, that's a huge part of our financial drivers then, their emails, so.
I'm ready when you guys are.
Sure.
All right, cool. Okay, so we're going to be discussing community development. Community development, as you guys know, is a huge part in the admin office when it comes to interacting with the public. And the economic growth of Amelia as well. They partner with planning commission, the E D A and you guys as well. So I'm kind of going off most of the facts of once Brady left, due to the, it's having to be covered by myself. Debbie, who's a permit tech and Jerry Wayne to keep it afloat. Our typical position, as most know, I am administrative assistant. Jerry Wayne's a building official, Debbie's a permit tech, and then we also have contracted services to Berkeley Group. So with that, we all partner together, work with the circuit court clerk for information and researching to answer everyone's questions. So since January twenty twenty four, the rezoning request, we've had about. So since January twenty twenty-four, the rezoning request, we've had about eight. Now, all of them have been successful, but that kind of, that's a little bit more than what we normally get. When Holly was here, so those have definitely been increased, especially since the general public is coming out from Richmond. The special exceptions have been seven and majority of them tend to be like. Your second dwelling detached dwelling units. So that's been a hot topic and then certain businesses that aren't. Approved by rights. So you have to get a special exception for that.
Ask one question on that. When David might know to, speaking of the second dwelling piece, where is that? Where does that revision to the ordinance stand?
I just had a zoning meeting Monday or Tuesday this week, so it's just starting to progress.
Gosh, that is taking forever.
It is and.
They should have, we're gonna meet again before the planning commission. So it should go before the planning commission this month. What's the best thing, I think.
Wow.
The official one will not go like with public hearing and stuff like that this month. Again, this is all. We're limited in our staffing. So Berkeley Group is actually taking a look at our entire zoning ordinances. It kind of gets up to date with everything. The trending times subdivision, the detached dwelling is number one priority and things to include as in whether they're going to switch over the. The title of it to ADUs, which is accessory dwelling units because it's more appropriate for today's times. With that being said. Some of the general issues that they have with the zoning is. We, in our zoning with our special exceptions, we're listing per use and. They kind of want to follow other counties where. They're going to provide a table. They're just going to give a rough draft to kind of present and tweak and then bring it to the zoning committee as well. And then hopefully, let's see if it works. By April, we maybe will do a public hearing. So, but it, we do advertise a zoning meeting, so by any means, if you guys want to show up, please do provide input. And it's open to the public. So with that being said. Special events. Our special events have gone up quite a bit, which is amazing. We're getting more annual events like your lavender lavender festival, which is awesome. And then there's a few other ones like the tractor parade. So. Community involvement has been increased. With that being said, that has to go through several departments, which is why we also did the special event ordinance revision. As far as the grants and awards, things that is currently in progress is sidewalk phase as you are the sidewalk project, as you guys know. And then the marketing grant that was started when Brady was here is completed and that was also in conjunction conjunction with the EDA. And what they did is they provided the signs to kind of bring. As I call it, beautification to the the village and bring attention to that. And that was a hundred percent covered by the grant. And then what was left over. They used as part of financing for the production for Red Velocity to kind of bring awareness to. Amelia Day Festival and some of the local businesses.
I know this this is going to fall to Daryl, but if one of y'all would follow up with him, the. J, oh, shoot, I'm for the garden club. Sorry, garden club had volunteered last year to landscape those three signs and Daryl said. Didn't need them to volunteer to do it because the county was going to landscape them, but it's now been. Almost a year of them being unlandscaped. They don't. They look like they need to be.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely.
And again, I know he's not sitting here, but since this falls under. Community, if y'all would, if y'all don't mind following up on that, I realize that where is not the time to land, but it'd be nice to make sure that's on the agenda to get done.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Okay, so since November twenty twenty-four, that's when. Mr. Jerry Wayne over here has taken over for zoning administrator duties. We've had. Seven hundred plus inquiries alone just for zoning questions. A lot of it is subdivisions. Five hundred, possibly more alone was by email and you know, I can provide. Evidence of that. And how it works is they get sent to the info Amelia email. And then if it's something that we can handle in-house, we do, but a lot of it is subdivision questions. So we do send that off to Berkeley Group. And with that being said, again, it's just working with mostly Jerry Wayne and myself and Debbie, so. We are limited what we can and can't do and how long it can take compared to usual. Whereas when Brady was here, they can almost get an answer the day of. Now it can take up to ten days. And that includes with us working with Berkeley Group on researching the property because we have files in our office. So. You guys. Recent accomplishments. We've kind of touched base on this, the VTC marketing grant, which was the village signs, the red velocity production. They were used to enhance the aesthetics of the community. And to also bring awareness to the outside communities of the local events. EDA finance the rest of the red velocity production. So is that new cost of the county? It's kind of the EDA's way to show appreciation to the local businesses and bring awareness to them. The V dot sidewalk we already touched based on that is still an ongoing progress process. And it will be for a few years still, what you guys are aware of where we're at in that process. Community development is also collaborating with the CRC Planning Commission to update the Amelia Comprehensive Plan. We're hoping to have a finished product by the end of this year. We are definitely adding more. Information in this one compared to previous years. So by all means, we always encourage public and everyone to attend and provide input. Because it does affect everyone where we want to see Amelia go with their growth. Okay, so what's next? So reviewing current zoning ordinances with the Berkeley Group Planning Services to bring Amelia to appropriate zoning trends in society that coincides with the Amelia Comprehensive Plan. The pro to this is this will be accomplish utilizing current agreement budget budgeted hours. So it's not going to cost the county extra. They're just going to work within the timeline because currently. We're thankful enough that we don't. Fully use all the budgeted hours, so they're able to work with us on that. The con of this is it will take longer to effectively and accurately accurately update these zone, excuse me, zoning ordinances. There are other options, but it would be more costly and it's not needed at this time. Okay, the other item is we're going to order new zoning signs because the one thing that I've noticed is. The only zoning sign we have is for rezoning and though it's not required by code to have special exception advertised at the properties. I've come to notice that with certain public hearings and everything with these special exceptions. A lot of the times people aren't aware of them due to either they are, they have busy lives. So. A lot of people will drive by properties and that's how they see the zoning signs. So we're going to copy other counties on what they do and just order as general zoning sign. So that way, we don't run into issues like this current one where. Adjoining properties is owned by one person, so really the neighbors don't really have an idea what's going on. They don't know to keep up with the online notices.
Can you go on? Maybe change the style of.
We will. I will.
They look almost identical to to bio violence applications.
Absolutely. No.
Can't really tell. So I don't know if people really see him one or other.
So I'm in the process of kind of looking at other counties. And see what they utilize and as well update what ours look like. It's pretty basic. And that way. We'll have a few signs, but they all got to say, they're all going to say the same thing. It's just kind of a notice, hey, there's a. Public hearing or a pending zoning issue going on with this property and that way. It serves a multi-use and save county money.
That's good.
Uh, let's see. Internal review of responsibilities of the department's current future needs and wants. Okay, so. I don't know where that's at. Excuse me. So I want to ensure the accuracy and. We're doing internal review, meaning what the actual positions that we need and what they entitle. So this ensures. The accuracy of the position requirements for the job listing when we go to advertise and ensures that this position once filled isn't unnecessarily burdened. Opportunities. Sorry. Okay, so filling vacant community development director position, opportunities and development challenges. Currently utilizing Berkeley Group Planning Services, myself, Jerry Williams and the permit tech. Is what we're utilizing now. I understand that we're still going through the budget process. But this is not a recommended long-term solution. This can lead to employee burnout and efficiency of other departments. And and that is two of the main concerns really is honestly the efficiency of all departments because currently. With Jerry Wayne doing inspections and and building official duties, I. Help you guys out with the meetings as well as planning commission EDAs will. Along with that come the subcommittees. So we have the zoning subcommittee. We have. The plant, the comp plan committee, we, you know, there's, there's several things that is pulling me away from my normal duties as well. So it is recommended that. With the community development, adding an assistant or a planning position under the community development position. Is strongly erd encouraged. With the growth of the county follows the increased needs and responsibilities of the community development department. The position could assist not only in the planning area, but also grant searches that could be utilized towards CIP projects. Maintaining a single-person staffing model for this department poses a significant and consistent risk of high employee turnover. Keep in mind, I want to highlight again the amount of zoning questions alone that we get. With that, on top of the normal duties of a community development director, again, the one-person model is strongly discouraged. Adding a code and zoning enforcement position. Maybe that could double as an assistant or planning position. Currently, the county is complaint driven. This means as a complaint is submitted, Jerry Williams and Ashley and myself collaborate to accomplish addressing them. Given the increasing desire to take a more proactive approach in addressing potential current code violations in the county, our current staffing levels make this strategy impractical. So. With, you know, sign enforcements and actively going around, see who's living in an RV, this this kind of, we just don't have the staffing to be able to fully commit to this.
I totally agree. This, we had, you were on the, at least, we had actually budgeted for this position. Two budget cycles ago and. The position was just never filled. We'll leave it there. I completely agree this is necessary and there's actually a good bit of the funding that could come back through. I think we ran an email cycle recently on this that. Refines that it could generate not.
Potentially.
Could actually cover a decent portion of the position itself back. I'm a big believer in there's no point in having laws, rules, whatever you want to call them, if you're not enforcing them and. That it only hurts then the people that are following the law otherwise. So, yeah.
Well, I know some of the biggest things that we came across when. We were about to advertise for that position was it would be a new position for us, so we had to. Work with other localities to see what they actually offer in their, you know, job duties and titles. And that's why I'm saying. The code zoning enforcement position could also double as the assistant or planning position. So you kind of say it funny.
I know, I like, I think it's a very good strategy, yeah.
A lot of positions and a lot of things were frozen during last year's budget cycle due to the budget issues. So that's why it has not even been practically sought to filled. Not only that, we also want to make sure we fill that community development director position first. So whoever goes in there can structure that department to what suits them and the county best. So the potential, so some of the opportunities that we have is potential to collaborate with neighboring education facilities to create, utilize an interim position to fill an assistant position. So on top of having a code enforcement or zoning, you know, position. We could utilize potentially Longwood or someone who's trying to get hours in to set up an interim position where. Our biggest thing right now is the structure of the filing system. So that's another thing that I've discussed with Berkeley Group is potentially with a lot of these special exceptions or conditional rezonings is to. Add it maybe as a requirement to file with the circuit court clerk to the deed. So that way we, because we've had a lot of phone calls saying, well, I didn't know this was that, this was that when I bought the property. And unfortunately with Berkeley, they had to rely on Jerry Wayne and myself to do the research in the filing system in the office where a lot of these things could be easily looked up online. I still have to, circuit court clerks to see how that system would look like and if it would be beneficial or more cumbersome to them. So. This, that position with an interim position could also help. Provide digital record of management system online. So that way, should there be any questions, we can always help refer people online to do their own research. Instead of utilizing employees, staff, limited time to do it for them. Other potential opportunities is working with Virginia Tourism and other companies to spotlight Amelia County with possible grant grant opportunities to cover these. And this would also help with potential business growth and sustainment. I have been working a lot with EDA and partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. We actually have a meeting coming up to do a presentation with them. And we've also, after discussing with Mr. Monday, encouraging. Cohesiveness with the boards, with the EDA, the board supervising and planning commission. To start working together on coming up with ideas, start planning the future instead of what is being presented in front of us. And it also kind of coincides with the Amelia Comprehensive Plan. And then this will also allow the EDA and the planning commission to start finding the next future site for a business development. That's pretty much what I have for community development. Any questions I can try to answer?
As we're going into the formal budget cycle, I would just encourage y'all to think about, and this will go into building department to, Jerry. To think about. Both fees and I I hit on this last couple of years, I'll admit, but you know, when you're talking about. The volume increases, et cetera, and making sure that we really feel like they're covering the costs. For the county and that just looking really holistically at that, taking a good hard look at them. Bring back proposals.
Yeah, I'd love to build J. I'll touch base on that in a few minutes.
And with Mr. Deal, when he was here, he definitely helped. By looking at that and even with the increase from, I think it was a two fifty to five hundred tech, it it technically really doesn't cover all the public hearing advertisements. It helps. But in cases like, let's say, if the board decides to defer it back to the planning commission, well, we have to readvertise anything that would change or anything that comes up from that. And honestly, I know I've looked at other counties. I'm going to talk with Berkeley. That's also another thing to discuss with them and kind of collaborate. On what other counties do that fit their needs. I know another county that charges seven fifty. And that usually covers a lot of it. So yes, we are looking into that. Absolutely. And the other thing that I will bring up and it'll be potentially part of budget season, maybe not this one, but next year. As we have an aging group. In the commissions and boards and committees. Education on what is needed to make. Quality decisions with planning commission and EDA and everything. For these new new members coming in, there are educational opportunities. However, they are not cheap. So I know we have one member from the planning commission that wants to do an education course, but that one course is seven hundred and fifty dollars. It is costly, but. In the long run, it will benefit Amelia to send at least one person once a year to be educated on the updated trending items. And codes and everything.
That's something we've been lacking here for a long time is staying up with the education.
I agree.
So.
And it's important in these days and times because it moves fast.
And a lot of the things, when you talk about looking at our fees and budgets. Having these feeds updated will also help cover those courses.
It should.
Correct. Well, and I think we can also look, I'm I'm very much in favor of the education piece. I think we should look then about. Not just sending people off to it, but you know, similar to the way we have to bring training in to do it mainly through Jeff, you know, for FOIA and others like that. You know, instead of seven fifty to train one person, do we spend two, I'm making up a number, but you know, twenty-five hundred to bring a specialist in and do a training session for the entire. Planning commission, for example, again, making something up, you know.
Right.
I think you could, you could get a expert to come in for not much. I think you could, you could get a expert to come in for not much about that.
Oh, absolutely.
Session once a year and it's just required. Yeah.
Right. And I can definitely talk with the CRC. I'm sure they have plenty of resources to look into that as well as VACO. So. All right, Jerry Wayne, it's gonna be your, your time's shot.
I'm not gonna talk as much as somebody else.
Sorry.
All right, let's get started here. This can be short and sweet, hopefully. So the building department handles all building permits issued, uh, in the county. This includes building trade permits and the issuance of agricultural permits. The ag permits are zoning based, but our permit tech produces the, uh, permit for the zoning department. Over the last year, we issued, uh, 553 permits. Uh, 67 new dwellings went up, 15 new commercial buildings went up. 90 certificate of occupancies were issued. Um, that number is a little high, higher than those two numbers above due to the fact of people calling and asking for a. They've lost theirs or somebody buying a business that wanted an updated certificate of occupancy for that. The rest of those consist of trade and accessory building permits. The total number of inspections was 1,690. Our budget is meant to be self-sufficient, meaning our permit fee should off, offset the cost of the department. And since I've started here, I didn't include this in, but over the last two and a half, three years. I've started a spreadsheet to verify that building permit fees are covering the budget. We have been over the last three years and this year we're looking a little low. I'm hoping we're gonna bring that up this spring once building picks back up some. Uh, recent accomplishments is fully licensed department. Uh, I'm certified building official. Uh, Debbie Roches is a permit technician. Both, both of us have, uh. Completed our code update training for the new 2021 code cycle and. All of the CEUs to keep our license current. That was approximately 90 hours combined. We've also made all forms accessible online to try to help simplify the process so people can have those. In hand when they show up or filled out when they get here to try to help shorten up the process. What's next for the department? Uh, electronic permitting software. This should, uh, help with a simplified process for applications and associated forms. Inspection results can be sent out by email once, uh, once completion versus leaving a paper copy on site that could blow away or get lost. And it would also cut down on office supplies. We're also, uh, gonna start working on di- digital archiving. Per old permanent files that we're gonna keep will digitally back those up. So we, we lose a paper copy somehow. We've got that. It'll also help eliminate paper waste. Opportunities and department challenges. It's right now, we're with community development, you know, filling in for community development. We, we're kind of limited on our time for digital, digital ar- archiving, excuse me. We're gonna hopefully this spring, summer work on getting more of that done. We're also gonna work on streamlining our process for the applicants and the office staff to help cut down on time. People are in the office and help free up some time for our office staff to work on other things. Coverage, our permit technician. Um, Ashley covers for her when she's off. When she's available. Um, other than that, we don't really have a backup plan for her. We just get other office staff to fill in to do that whenever possible. Um, the, for me, I have a, Richard Jones, the former building official is filling in for me when I take off. I also use not away Cumberland and Prince Edward inspectors to fill in for me. If, if needed, when I'm off for vacation or anything like that. Other than that, I think that's all I have for my department.
So with the permit technician. If we added an intern or we added an assistant to the community development, they would also. Coexist with the permit tech and kind of act as a, as another person in that department. Because and all honestly, Debbie does the work of almost three people. She is the main person that answers a lot of the calls because they come in at that phone line. She also, the first person that people see when they come into our office. Um, and like I said, you know, like Jerry Wayne said, we all try to help out where we can, but with the staffing, that is our biggest concern. With upcoming situations.
Well, I think when you think about then. Covering the, you know, fees, covering the volume, you've got to make sure that it's covering your future needs.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
To.
It, over the last few years, we have. Yeah, I've talked to a couple of y'all, you know, in the past about permit fees. And when I see that they're getting down about equal with our budget, we're gonna probably start looking at raising fees to just help offset future costs.
Could you, could you put together something that shows us the, the core fees? You know, you don't have to do it for everything, but the core fees. For us and equivalent counties around us too, just.
I believe Debbie may have something on that.
I wouldn't be surprised, you know, just give us a good idea. Cause it's, it's, you want to do what you just, what we're just talking about, but you also want to make sure we're keeping in line with others as well.
And we are. Get excessive. I think we are pretty good.
I'm not surprised.
And we have raised a few in the last couple of years and we're looking to raise a couple of this year that we're low in. Mainly like commercial solar projects and different things like that, that other counties are.
Exactly.
Getting, you know, getting better permit fees for, we're just, we're looking at those things and, uh, future towers too. So we're looking at that. I can pay, I can get Debbie to, uh, scan it in and we can.
That would be great. I mean, this is where, this is where we're ultimately accountable to the, the city, as you know, to the citizens and like that's where. This is where we can prevent broad tax increases whenever we can do targeted fees, you know, which no one likes either. But at least a fee is for something that's specific and you're getting a service back for versus the broad-based tax increases that we hope to either. Prevent or minimize and.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just a, an FYI, when Pon and I conducted all the department budget reviews. We not only focused on the expenditure side of what the departments was requesting needing to run their department. We also task every department to take a look at, um, budget resolution, the one that you have your fees and your rates declared. To look at any fees that their respective department has in that budget resolution and make sure those are current. If not, I told them to pencil in recommended changes and then we'll bring those to you as a part of the budget process. And then we also told them to take a look on the revenue side of the budget to make sure that we're capturing. The revenue that we think we're gonna collect from those said fees. And that way we don't leave what I call money on the table of, of things that we don't recognize on the revenue side of the budget.
That's good. Cause that's the last couple of years, that's been like an afterthought. So that's excellent. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you double duty. You know, they, they mentioned that community development director position. I mean, that, as we all know, that is a vital position and. Uh, that's one of the things that I'll do. I'll spend plenty of time talking to the incoming county administrator about my observations in the office. I knew it was busy, how much work that came through the community development office. But what really was mind-boggling, when I saw the statistics, the number of inquiries about zoning matters that came in. Uh, that, what was it? 700 that had just come in in a small month period, inquiries about zoning matters. And it goes to show how much extra work that they do. And it's really in neither one of their, their job descriptions, but that is people that are boots on the ground, people that are answering the emails, answering the telephones and. Making sure the answers are provided if they know the answers and if not, getting to the appropriate people to make sure that we provide those answers. It is a busy office and I've said it many times before, this is the busiest county administrator job that I've had. And a lot of it is because of the leanness of the staffing. But it's also impressive of how much extra duties they pick up, uh, without it being within their job description.
We are always encouraged and happy to do cross-training, just in case something happens. And that was something that, uh, Mr. Harvey has told us to do is we all need to learn cross-trained just in case, because you don't know.
Who else you got, Mr. Monday?
We got social services, I think supposed to be around 10:40. So if you want to take a break, a good time. Oh, she coming down the hall. I just saw her walk back.
We'll discuss the meeting for tomorrow night today.
We will, um.
But we will, yeah, but also the hiring of the. County administrator. So let's go postpone it another whole week.
Good, we could talk about.
We do something today. Don't know how we advertise this meeting. We're just steadily losing time. Have we seen an updated contract? Has that been sent out yet?
The contract, uh, is with, um, the county attorney right now. It's with the county attorney. We, we might have an answer from him today.
I don't, there are two, those are two, uh, yeah, one for children, CSA, the others.
Something can't have a weather update at 11 o'clock.
He does.
He does.
And he said he'd, he'd get right with us as soon as that's open.
It's a little slow. Nobody knows how much. It's gonna be wet.
She's with the citizen right now, but she'll be right in. And Jerry Wayne scanning that in space. I'll have it up by 100% shortly.
Morning.
Good morning.
Nice to join us.
I was in the hole.
We just saw you go by, so.
Yeah, I've been out there for a while. All right.
Actually a minute early.
A minute early. See, look at that. Giving me a hard time for. Good morning. Do we want to start with DSS or CSA or do we care? You have one up front?
David needs an extra copy because I ran out of the social services one.
Well, we can start with social services if you want to. Does that work for everybody?
That works.
All right. So if you will look at the first page with the charts. Um, I just wanted everyone to see what fiscal 24 in its entirety looked like for social services. If you look on the left-hand chart, you will see from June, now remembering social services fiscal year is June to May. So, uh, a little different there. The total funding for social services for fiscal 24 was 38 million, 554,214. If you break it down, you can see the federal part is 54.75% federal funding. State funding is 43.67%. The grant and other funding is point oh six and then local funding, 1.53% of the total. So that just gives you that little bit of an idea. And then over on the right-hand chart, what this does is tell you the major programs. There, these aren't all the programs. I think we talked about this when we talked about quarterly numbers, but these are the biggest programs people think of. Uh, when they think, think of benefits that are getting distributed into the community or for use of our, our citizens. And so you're looking at those numbers there for SNAP, which is what used to be called food stamps, 3 million. TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, childcare, Medicaid, 33 million. So Medicaid is, th- those are the benefits of Medicaid. So it's probably hot hospitals, doctors, those types. Also in Medicaid, you would have, um, payments for, uh, services that are done in, uh, hospitals, residential programs. Long-term care programs, whatever Medicaid is funding, that's how much, uh, is being funded out there. And then energy programs, 312,957 dollars. So there's a lot going into our community for a very, um, very low local cost. That gives you the, those totals. On the recent accomplishments page. Um, I'll just say Amelia DSS continues to maintain high standards of fiscal accountability. And elevated percentages and timeliness and compliance. An example of that, our benefits unit. Had 100% timeliness, processing of TANF applications for all of 2024. Um, and 100% for January of 2025. Uh, will throw in there that I am having to fund some, um, approving some special duty leave. Uh, as, as pay for, to be able to stay in compliance. An example, we had a Medicaid, uh, application that had to be completed. And if we were gonna get it done and stay in compliance, the person had to stay an extra 30 minutes. So it is taking that quite a bit more because the numbers have increased so substantially. That, um, I am having to fund more, you could call it overtime, but it's special duty leave. So we're trying to split it up between folks. So it doesn't end up being overtime, but the numbers are so great, our, our, the unit can't keep up. We've had a significant increase in APS and CPS calls. So that's, that's a huge thing as well. Energy share and energy assistance is taking up a very large amount of time at this point as well. The agency did complete fiscal 24 under budget. And we're currently fully staffed. You look at what's next for the department. Is to continue to access all available funding and collaborate with community partners to minimize use of local funds and maintain high standards of fiscal accountability. Uh, we are applying for any and every grant-funded state, federal. Amount of money that we possibly can. So, um, and we will continue to do that. This coming year, we're gonna have to implement multiple new or updated family services programs and policies. They're putting the state is, um, requiring a substance use screening guidelines for our family services group. Um, we are, they are not trained to be substance abuse providers or screeners. But it's a screen that tells them if there could be a potential so to send them to crossroads. So, and it's required. Ken First policy is, it's new policy. It's an old idea, but it's really just trying to keep. Kids with family instead of coming into foster care, but a lot of changes. Parental child safety placement agreements, policies and procedures. Uh, that is something new. We haven't had to have one, but that's for a short term. If we can place a child with a family member and thinking that within 90 days, we could get them back home, then we can use this funding program. But my point here is where are we going? There are so many new updated guidelines, policies, regulations that it's hard to keep up with for everyone. And it takes a lot of time. Um, what's next is to remain in compliance and continue to provide exceptional service to our most vulnerable citizens. That's what we're here for. Um, develop and implement professional development plans for experienced staff, which includes succession planning. And I will tell you that the state HR, we follow state HR and that is required. We are required to develop these plans and to implement them and to show that we're doing it. And to continue training and development of new benefits staff, because we do have, uh, several new under a year. In our benefits unit, we have two that soon will be over a year in our family services. So we're, we're starting to get there, but continue the training and development, um, permitting equitable distribution of caseloads. But continue the training and development, permitting equitable distribution of caseloads. Opportunities and challenges. So small agencies require each staff member to be versed in several areas to be successful. VDSS, the Virginia Department of Social Services, requires training and conferences to enable networking with other, other agencies and ensuring compliance for the ever-changing programs and policies. So we have multiple, we do get our multiple staff members that get scholarships to go to these, and that helps offset the costs. So we apply for any and all scholarships to help us offset those costs as well. But an example of uh training is our entire family services unit has to um complete motivational interview training. Once done though, that will allow us to pull down additional funding from the feds um versus using all, using state and local funding, and that will go offset staff. So that will be helpful. Our family services unit is trying really hard. They're, it's on their um challenge to try to find an emergency foster home in the area. And I will give you an example. We have a child right now that very likely within the next week or two may be spending the night in our office because we cannot find any place for this kid to go. So uh that's a, a real challenge. And uh so that, that's something they want to try to work on. Maintaining manageable caseloads for both benefits and family services is definitely a challenge. There's been such an increase in the number of families served on the benefit side, the programs that are provided, and an increase in APS and CPS reports um that it, it's hard to keep up. Uh, and limited community resources to access and support our clients. And then state guidelines, sometimes it's a challenge because state guidelines versus the funding sometimes prevents us, prevents eligible clients from being able to receive benefits they're entitled to. And I'll give you an example. We have funding sitting over there that the state has given us that's in our budget to pay for daycare assistance. We have people who are eligible for it, but the state does the funding, and then they give us a number of targets. So it's a number of people we can fund. And we don't have enough targets. So we've got money sitting there that we can't use for anything else and people who need it, but we can't use it. And so that's, that's a challenge with uh working with state. But it is what it is, and we do the best that we can do to serve the clients.
A lot of the schools deal with it too. I know it's like, they talk about like, oh, there's money here for this.
Uh huh. But you can't use it for anything else. You can only use it for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have people who are eligible, people who could use it.
Yeah.
We have one family who has three children. Two of them are getting it and one's not.
Yeah.
What do you do to be able to go to work?
Well, you mentioned Crossroads, which, you know, obviously deals with the same things you do.
Absolutely.
Months meeting, we're like, here's the money sitting there, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So, and, and that's part of the reason we end up coming in under budget every year, and it's not because we're poor planners and budgeting. It's because we have to budget for what the state's gonna give us, and then we have to figure out whether we can use it or not.
And not only not only poor planners, and it's not because you don't need it either.
Exactly. We need it. We just sometimes can't use it, so.
Uh, I have a question.
Absolutely.
How do y'all work with STEPS and PSR?
We work with STEPS all day long. We refer people to STEPS every day. I'm on the um, the um Heartland Group.
Yeah.
The Workforce Group. I have sent my folks to training there, and so they're using them as well. But yes, we refer back and forth to STEPS all the time.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I see that you provide a lot of the same services that they provide.
Uh huh.
And PSR provides. Yeah. Y'all need money from us, and they want money from us. Or we provide money for two different organizations that we could just help one more.
Nope. And I'll tell you why. Because some people are going to be eligible for our funding.
Yes.
However, not eligible for STEPS or not eligible for us, but eligible for STEPS. So there's certain different criterias and all the different types of funding. We work very closely together to ensure that nobody's double dipping, you know, now. But we could, right, we can have someone who is on benefits through us and prevention for foster care, and we need help with the Madeline's House to get them there. And we're working with them as to what they can provide, what we can provide, and which of those services will cost the localities the least. So we really do work together on making sure that we try to access the cheapest possible money um to provide all the services. But we work very closely together. Absolutely.
Childcare, they have this.
Head Start?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they provide, I take it to be free childcare.
Yep, that's Head Start.
And here you saying that you need to spend the money for childcare, yet they're providing.
They're two different programs though with regards to that. So Head Start is more preschool, whereas most of ours. So if you have, I'll give you an example. You have a family who, um, we have one right now. Mom is trying to work, and it's her, and so she has three children, and she is within the, the guidelines, but she can't find a job that pays her enough to pay for the childcare that it costs her to be able to go to work. So if she's eligible, she can get Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, which is a DSS program. It's what they used to call a welfare check. And she may be on, have Medicaid for insurance for her children. And if she's eligible for TANF and she follows all the rules and regulations and does the training necessary to, that we can help her steps, the workforce group will help uh to get her trained in order to get a job that will pay for her daycare, then we can pay the daycare while she's getting all that training and getting started in the job. And then for a certain amount of time for her to get on her feet, um, to allow for that. Now, if the uh Head Start, if one of the children falls into that, they wouldn't get that assistance from us and them. It's gonna be one or the other.
Yeah, I was just worried about, we provide the same service to different organizations, then uh.
Totally collaborative. Yeah, we're talking. Yeah, we're talking, and it's totally collaborative. And if we have someone who we can't serve, we're immediately calling them to see if they can. So, and we're all making sure that we're, we're doing what we're supposed to do.
But you're talking about daycare, what about the senior citizens?
Yes.
The ones who can't afford to go to a nurse, a nursing home.
So we do have adult services. We do have adult services that will help with home companions. However, the amount of funding that we receive, this past year, we were only able to help to with that, with the money. Now, Medicaid and auxiliary grants that we provide, those are, that's, will uh provide the funding for nursing home. So we do pay from nursing homes too. We really do.
We get ready to put him in.
Your production is overwhelmed.
Yeah. No, we work with a lot of different uh Piedmont senior resources. We have a lot of different funding. And I also have this year worked with our community organizations and started getting donations to help with things that we don't have uh funding for. So, and for folks like that. And a lot of it, I'll give you an example. We were able to help a, an elderly couple with their heating um until we could get, it was supposed to be seventeen degrees that, that weekend, and we were able to help with some donated funds to keep some heat on in their home until the repairs could be done through a state program and a grant program. So we do use things like that, and we also work with Piedmont and all different types of uh STEPS, any type of program that does for the elderly as well. But the, the funding is definitely limited, and we keep asking and asking and asking for more. We don't always get it from the feds and the state, so. But yes, we definitely have programs for the elderly as well. But your answer, we're very careful. Um, can I tell you a hundred percent? Can I tell you a hundred percent there's not fraud out there? There's not double dip? No, I can't tell you a hundred percent. And I'll tell you right now, I have a, in my budget, I have a request for an additional position because we're not able to work the fraud that we need to work. Um, it's one of the things that has to get set aside, but the state gives us money to do it. And if we don't start getting into compliance with that, we're gonna lose that money, but still be required and get sanctions for if we don't do the job. So um, yeah, but yes, there's always gonna be a little bit of that, but we are very diligent and watch it for that. Any other questions with regards to DSS? CSA? Yes. Which one? Got you. Okay. Yeah, I don't think y'all can see that anyway. You have it written down, but. CSA. So I kind of tried to do a little bit of the same thing here for you guys. The first page. One of the things I want to make sure everyone understands is the Children's Services Act or CSA is under the umbrella of DSS. So the staffing is under the DSS budget. However, the services are a completely, totally separate program and totally separate budget. And one of the big things to remember is we don't just serve DSS clients. So CSA, if you look on the left-hand side of that chart, you will see that thirty-one percent of the CSA funding that goes out are actually school cases. So these are private day, uh, these are services that an IEP at the school states that the child cannot be taught in the public school building, and so they have to send them out to a private day school. When that happens, and, and an example of that is a low-functioning autistic child or a child who has um learning disabilities, but also major medical needs that cannot be met in the public building. There are privately licensed private day schools that children go to. An example is Faison School for Autism Enrichment. So the public schools have to transport those children there for their education, but the education is funded by CSA. So there are thirty-one percent of the, the cases are um schools. DSS holds fifty percent of the cases. Crossroads, the CSB, is thirteen percent of the cases. And court service units are six percent. So your DSS is your prevention cases, your foster care children and your fostering futures children. Crossroads is youth who have major mental health needs but are not involved with DSS or the courts. And the courts will case manage and CSA will fund for kids who are on, on probation or parole when there is no other funding source under court services or DJJ to fund it. So it's just really important to understand that CSA um serves a lot of kids, not just, and families, not just DSS cases. On the right-hand side, you will see the funding from, now, CSA has the July to June fiscal year, so you gotta flip back to that fiscal year. So for fiscal year twenty-four, the total was six sixty-four, three oh one. Federal government does not pay for this program, but the state funded it's four hundred and forty thousand, almost four hundred and forty-one thousand, and the locality costs two hundred and twenty-three thousand. So you see that um, that, those fundings there. These are mandated programs. If children are mandated and meet the eligibility for this, this funding, they will be served. Recent accomplishments. A monthly financial reconciliation process has been implemented and is working very well. Uh, we did end up with eighty-five dollars left in twenty-five that should have gone back to twenty-four. Uh, and that was just, I think honestly, it's, but right, eighty-five dollars. And, and it's a refund, so it's on the good. Um, but uh, yeah, so that uh, that's working. Our CPMT, which is our Community Policy and Management Team, who oversees the funding and the FAP team, which is the Family Assessment and Planning Team, which is the group of folks who meet with the families and children to determine what the needs are and determine eligibility. We have full membership now per state requirements that we did not have when I came to, to social services. Amelia CSA had two CPMT members, one FAP member and the CSA coordinator participate in the state-required CSA conference back in October of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have the CSA coordinator and myself, and then court services funded for one of their folks to go and um CSB, one of their folks go. These are complicated programs. If you don't stay up to date, you are going to miss what you're supposed to do and be out of compliance pretty quick. And the state does require um this, this training. What's next for this department? CPMT is currently working on updating the policy and procedure manual to ensure state compliance. We are um working to access other funding streams to decrease the local costs. One of the things is we have what's called PSSF, which is uh promoting safe and stable families, which is a budget line under DSS, but CPMT for CSA kind of determines how that money is spent. We haven't been able to access all of that money because of the programs they previously had set there. And so I'm working now with our, our family services unit, and then we'll be bringing it to the CPMT to change up how we're using this money. So we can access it and use it because it is cheaper, even only by a couple percent, percentage points, but it's cheaper than CSA funding. So I want to be able to use it for concrete supports for foster youth, but I've got to take it through the CPMT because we are required to pay concrete supports for foster youth, transportation, clothing, housing, anything and everything they need. There are kids. Uh, and they can be until they're twenty-one years old. So if you turn eighteen while in foster care and you sign yourself back in, you get served until you're twenty-one. Yep, so. And that's, that's not our choice. That's requirement, so. Oish, that's true. Don't want to tell anybody. Um, we are getting ready to complete the full State Office of Children's Services required audit. It's a self-assessment that is due on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and then that will be a very long audit process. Um, it happens, supposed to happen every three years. I think maybe it's been four or five here. And we will see how that goes. I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of things we're out of compliance with. And we're working slow but short to bring us into compliance, but one of our issues is that opportunities and challenges. Our CSA coordinator is unable to complete all the CSA responsibilities due to having multiple DSS duties. It's a serious challenge and a barrier to compliance at no fault of the staff. Um, an additional position has been requested in the DSS. If approved, responsibilities will be redistributed appropriately to allow our CSA coordinator to take on the full accountability as necessary for CSA compliance and excellence. So she's not been able to be trained or take on all of the, the, what she needs to actually do to be in full compliance with CSA because she's doing too much other work. We don't have anybody to do. So that's our biggest challenge with CSA at this point. And that is about it. Anybody have any questions with regards to CSA?
Like when you get full of staff and go inside and add more staff.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep. We have, our CSA coordinator is spending an average of one and a half to two weeks a month on energy share, which is a program that is funded by United Way and Dominion. But we determine eligibility and we take care of the funding. They give us some money. So I will tell you this, the position that I'm requesting is, is going to be a benefits position. They're gonna work with the energy share programs. They're gonna work with the um, uh, fraud programs and/or it's gonna be distributed appropriately to the people who are trained to do all of that work. And then the CSA coordinator will be able to do what she wants. We get thirteen, the locality gets thirteen thousand, four hundred and five dollars every year to offset the CSA coordinator's salary from the state. We get approximately seven thousand dollars a year from the United Way to help administer the energy program. We also get um another six or seven thousand from the state, like I said, for the fraud. So when you figure out the local, if we add this position, if you figure out the local cost of a position because we get state and federal funding for DSS positions, the local cost of this position potentially could be about twenty-two thousand. And the amount of money we receive to run these programs that we really need the extra position to help with is twenty-seven thousand. So we actually bring in more than we're gonna spend locally for that position. And then maybe we can get into full compliance and, and do what we need to do. So.
Okay, you say you need more staff. Do you have room for staff?
We do. We do. We have two intake offices. Right now, we use one for benefits and one for family services. But it's a. But it's a very rare occasion both are needed. And if they are, we, somebody can go into the conference room. But we do have those two offices that we will take one, and then it'll just be one intake office. Yes.
That's a major problem we got, is space.
And the state, the state provides our computers. That's why I couldn't put it on a thumb drive this morning, because we can't use thumb drives in our state. Provided computer equipment, that kind of thing. So yes, so we, we do have that. So.
That's good.
That's about it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you this week. Yes, you will. You won't.
No, it's gonna snow tomorrow.
Well, I hate. Stay positive. I don't, I'm not in charge of that. That's Cindy's decision, I guess, as the, or the county's.
Take a wait on it? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I ain't talking to her.
That's for good.
Then who we got?
Byron, like? Yes, he's Byron, because Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good.
Are we starting without the other two?
Who sleep when you sleep with it?
My whole voice. Don't let it call me coming down driveway on the tractor. Look, they don't need calling me. I'm on the tractor. You don't hear no fun.
You gotta put on vibrate radio.
Vibrate? I'm vibrating enough sitting in the tractor. Pouncing.
Fancy tractors that has Bluetooth speakers?
It does have that Bluetooth radio. What do you call that in there? It don't work.
He, he gonna start.
Okay.
We've all stuck out the phone calls.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to try to roll through two presentations, one for HR, and then I'll follow it up with DMV. DMV is busy because we're getting ready to have some weather, so she's been pretty busy today. So. So, okay, so we're going to start off with some twenty twenty-four facts and statistics. You can see that our turnover rate at the beginning of last year was twenty-two and a half percent. By December, it was down to nine point nine. This includes all county positions, DSS, constitutionals, it's everybody. We reset, we received eighteen resignations across, running the game in all the, all of the different departments. We had eleven vacancy announcements that were managed by the county admin office. Those do not include DSS Constitutional Library, things like that. We received sixty-five applications. We interviewed nine, held nineteen interviews. We have, we onboarded ninety-four employees. So that's everybody from poll workers to seasonal at Parks and Rec, full-time, part-time, DSS, everybody. You can see that in twenty twenty-four, we had eight employees that were eligible for retirement, and we processed one. For data entry, these are transactions that were conducted just by HR. This is a pretty conservative number. But it's, you know, all of the onboarding, any benefit changes, salary changes, position changes, it, you know, these, these data entry points do not include anything that was kind of entered by the Finance Department into the payroll system. We processed about twelve injuries on the job.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many of us of your state have a band-aid?
Yep.
Compared to having to go be treated?
So we had three that were more severe. Two of them have received lifetime medical for the injury, and one, I expect, will, will get lifetime benefit this year.
Now, that really affects our insurance rates, don't it?
It does.
That's something I was going to lead up to on that about how, in the past, I worked for a big, major company. And then they developed a safety procedure. They put employees in teams. And if you had no reported injuries within a quarter or a half of a year, you got a little safety.
Oh, safety award?
You could pick out
Okay.
Something out of it, and the company get it because they save so much on their insurance. And they really cut down on the reported injuries because people were going reporting that they had, you know, this happened, and, oh, needles, a band-aid, keep going, you know, but they went to the doctor.
Right.
And insurance steady going up.
Yep, I can say that the, of the twelve that were reported, we didn't have many, some of them just report it because they need to, but they haven't, they didn't go to the doctor. So that's positive. They do have to report it to us just in case something happens later. They only have twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
So.
Who's going to?
It's the go one, yeah.
Is what was driving the insurance rates up, up and up. And they really cut back on that. And they got a little price for, because they had their coworkers and all saying, don't you screw me on my, you know, and I mean, it's nice stuff they've been giving away and all, you know, if you want so long on certain period.
I've seen those kind of incentive programs for different things. Okay. All right, so, um, we'll move on. Yep, that's right. So recent accomplishments, you can see that, you know, the HR department's relatively new for the county. So since its inception, we've implemented an employee portal where we process all the onboarding, new hire paperwork, tax forms, direct deposit. We let them input all of that into that system. We track our leave balances. We track our leave requests through that system. It holds historical information, personal information. We've implemented an onboarding process, which is intended to facilitate success for the new employee. It begins before the first day of employment, and it runs, follows the employee all the way through the first ninety days, and it calls for regular check-ins with supervision for communication. We've also developed a more consistent performance management plan that ensures that all employees receive an annual performance evaluation each year. We've tried to do some employee engagement initiatives. We've held, we hold an annual vendor fair every year during open enrollment. It allows our employees to speak with face-to-face with any benefit providers that we, that we offer. We've had lunch and learn events. We've offered onsite flu shot clinics. We have done county-wide Angel Tree adoption through the nursing home, and we facilitated individual appointments with benefit providers, particularly the retirement planning representatives from VRS and Nationwide. That's really our most well-attended appointment sessions. People are very interested in that. So what's next? An FY twenty-six budget item is going to be a comprehensive review of employee compensation. Policy three nineteen states that the county administrator every three, every three years may direct a review of employee compensation. So that is a budget item for this coming budget cycle, cycle. The last review was done in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Another FY twenty-six budget item is going to be professional development funds. The goal is to offer onsite training for all employees who are utilizing our accounting, the main accounting software for the county. This would be facilitated by the vendor, and we would plan to bring them onsite and offer it across the board. We would also like to begin some employee recognition, acknowledging the efforts and the contributions of the staff. It'd really go a long way in just helping to have a sense of appreciation. So we would like to start to do some of that. We'd also like to expand on the employee engagement initiatives. We'd like to have more lunch and learns, maybe quarterly, and offered more opportunities for professional development. Opportunities and challenges. So we're not any different than anybody else in this market right now. We've got retention issues. We've got recruitment challenges. So for retention, we have limited opportunities for advancement. We have limited opportunities for professional development and employee burnout. For recruitment, our health insurance rates are are high, and our proximity to larger localities and private sector employment opportunities. I can tell you that in the last two years, we've had two, two candidates turned down employment because of health insurance rates. We, we often, I also often get calls from people who are asking about our benefits before they apply, and then they don't follow it up with an application. So whether the health, health insurance is a driver, we don't know, but we can, we can glean that maybe it was. Our day-to-day challenges are really the limited staffing in the admin office. The volume of interactions with citizens is increasing. One data point I can provide is our new phone system allows us to do some reporting and some pulling of information. So from June of twenty twenty-four to December of twenty twenty-four, inbound calls to the admin office, the main number was four thousand, four hundred and sixty-three. I can tell you, January of twenty twenty-five, we had eight hundred and ten. There's about five of us on, on a regular, every day, there's about five of us who answer the phone, in addition to everything else that we're doing. I can also tell you that many people are starting to track the number of emails that they're receiving just for metrics, just for data points, to be able to show what we're doing. So six, an opportunity that we have is succession planning. We have twelve employees who are going to be eligible for retirement this year. I haven't heard about how many we will see, but that's who's eligible. So succession planning is a way for us to prepare employee, current employees for new leadership opportunities. It's going to provide for continuity operations when those positions are vacated. And the knowledge transfer is really important, so that institutional knowledge that's gained through, through employment and being in these positions for a long time, that can be passed on. I think that's going to be really important. I think we've seen that over the last year or two, how important that knowledge transfer really is. So that is it for HR. Any questions on that?
I don't have any. You said it all. We know we're short staffed, and we gotta work to it.
Yeah, we're doing everything we can.
Unfortunately, that's the world we live in. It goes out in the public sector. They can't get nobody to work.
We're not any different. You know, every county is facing it. Every private sector's facing it. We're not any different. It just hurts a little more when you start off with fewer to begin with. You have to give me? Okay, that's fine. No, you're good.
Is it combined with your HR one?
Uh-uh, it was, uh, emailed two of them yesterday.
Do you have any upcoming interviews for any of these positions?
We have two applicants for Finance Director that I'll be getting with Mr. Monday about. They applied over the weekend. So a lot of our ads renewed, like VGFOA, it got renewed. I think one of, at least one of them pulled it from there, so. All right, so this will be for DMV. We'll start off with facts and statistics. The Amelia DMV processed nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine total transactions in twenty twenty-four that, with the values of those transactions, with more than seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Her daily average count is forty, and the most common transactions are titles and registrations. So we, the Virginia, the Amelia DMV had the audit, and we scored a hundred on it, so that was really good, that she's done a really good job. That was conducted by the DMV Select Leadership Team. I think there's another level of an audit that'll probably be held next year. We've heard a lot of customers express their appreciation for the convenience of having the Amelia DMV Select so close. That, that's always positive to hear good things about it. So what's next for this department? We've got a budget request to fill the vacant position for FY twenty-six. That was a position that was frozen in FY twenty-five. So we're hoping that maybe that'll be an opportunity for this next year. I will also be completing the DMV training to comply with DMV requirements. That'll be the first week of March. We, actually, it'll be interesting. We, with their departure of the last county administrator, we have not had a second signer for many of the forms that need it. So I'll be, be able to comply with that. They've been offering a lot of grace because we haven't had that second signer as a checks and balance. So we'll be doing that the first week of March. We'll go from there and see how that goes.
Is that vacant position full-time or what?
It advertises full-time. The last time when we advertised it last, it was full-time. Part-time in the DMV is hard because we need somebody who can be flexible. It wouldn't be just an everyday, ten to two. We would need to be, be flexible, maybe be a week, available for a week if somebody's on vacation, or come in at a last minute if somebody's sick. So that's hard. With the biggest challenge in twenty twenty-four is only had the one person to provide the services. We've had to be closed for sickness or, you know, vacation, things like that. The, the citizens have been very gracious. But we have had to close. So, and I think that takes care of it for DMV. Any questions?
Both sides for the DMV side.
Yes, DMV has had.
DMV is a lot of technical.
Yes, DMV has had lots of times where they've gone down.
It's right there with the postal service.
They just take a bag of mail, throw it in the trash, and keep getting it.
The other way, they get two for one. I see them delivering mail on Sunday.
Yeah.
Quite often.
Packages.
Not mail, packages.
Amelia does.
Pro Arca, yeah.
Amelia does, yeah.
You pay dearly for that.
They stop at every mailbox. I don't know what to do. All right, what else we got, Mr. Monday?
I think environmental, we have that one at eleven forty, Ashley. Any changes, or is that still?
Uh, that is correct, but I, he actually is in the office. If you want, I can get him to schedule a comment, or, it's already have his press.
Yeah, and then we can talk weather afterwards, and maybe all that will come together.
Wake up tomorrow, the ground will still be the same color as it is when you went to bed.
Oh, yeah. It's when they call for the big one. I don't pay no attention.
Well, they're back.
Dustin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Get my notes up here. This one will probably be a little shorter than some of the other ones.
But we won't complain about it.
Okay. All right. So this is the May County Board Supervisor Short Term Planning Session for twenty twenty-five for Environmental Management. Some of our twenty twenty-four department facts and statistics. Over the last year, county government buildings here in the courthouse recycled twelve thousand, four hundred pounds of waste. That was done with the help of our recycle tech, Chris Parrott. She comes in twice a week, collects recyclables from county buildings, and takes them to a Waste Management Service Conex box. And Waste Management takes. And waste management takes that to be recycled. We've recycled since September, five hundred pounds of plastic grocery bags from the convenience sites and the twenty four hour drop off at the landfill. And this summer I took eight hundred pounds of lead acid batteries to be recycled. Um, and those were all batteries that were brought in by citizens. Now, how long they've been accumulating, I was not aware of, but they were there, so I took them to be recycled. Some of our recent accomplishments, accomplishments were restarting the plastic grocery bag recycling program. That had kind of tapered off as Food Line was having some issues recycling. So we recycle our plastic bags through Food Line. They provide us a drop off point and they recycle it through Next Trex, which turns into plastic deck boards. Food Line was having issues. They stopped for a while. We were able to get back on with them in September and resume recycling the bags for the citizens. We've had effective county code compliance without having to enforce any penalties for any code violations or issues that have come up. Um, we've had staff training and grant writing. Jessica Easter, our recycle, our environmental specialist, she's receiving training in grant writing. I'm receiving training in flood plain, plain management. So what's next for our department? We're planning some county cleanup days as part of the spring green resolution that you all passed. We're going to have an art competition for the schools so that the kids can get involved like it's been done in the past. Tire Amnesty Day is in the works. I'm looking on some ways to get that planned for hopefully sometime in April. Our five year recycling report for the county is due to the state this year. That will be finished in, by the end of March. And then we have an information campaign for styrofoam container ban, which will be taking effect for all businesses July first of two thousand and twenty six. And that's a state level ban. Some of our department opportunities and challenges, we have some upcoming education opportunities. There is an upcoming class I'll be taking for solid waste operator training as well as DEQ, stormwater erosion settlement control training. Some of the challenges we face, increasing costs of services, costs to recycle things are always going up and people rarely ever pay you to recycle something. You always have to pay them to recycle it for you. And loss of services, some recycling services are pulling out of Virginia or canceling their coverage of the state. So we're having to find alternative routes to recycle these things and ensure that they don't go into the landfill. And then last, we've got public adoption of new practices. It's when new, uh, new bands come in, for instance, the styrofoam band, making sure that everybody gets on board and gets on a roll before the band takes effect is probably one of the, the best things we can do, but it also presents a challenge for the department to get ahead of it and make sure that everybody else gets ahead of it as well. So do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
You mentioned, I can't remember her name, but picks up all, you know, the county.
First bill, yes.
Yes, picks up all the stuff and takes it to waste management's.
Yes.
So let's for that. Every time I take our recycling, which we take it once a week off, do we go to the main, we're the closest to the main facility landfill. Both of their main units for recycling are slam full. Do you run into that problem too?
Are they the, the main green boxes?
Yeah.
So that, that's serviced ho- wholly by waste management.
Yeah.
She goes out, she collects just the plastic bags, but they have it set on a pickup schedule with Thompson. Now, if they, you're seeing them always full.
Every time I go.
So I can let them know that they're starting to fill up more regularly and ask them to increase the rate if they take them off.
I can't believe they're not.
House is spaceful.
I can't believe Waste Management doesn't know. Yeah, it's.
I know that. But if you talk, you know, these, uh.
Yes, thank you. Please point, please make that comment to them.
Something about the kids on cleanup days and stuff. Why don't you hit some of these back road bridges, all these streams? Not the main drag, because they don't have time to stop there, but the one on Dyke Lane at Black Creek, if you scrape all the deer carcasses off all the tires banner, it, it's a bunch of tires banner from people's land at, where there's pull offs. Of course, like I said, it's that's a drop point. Spread the buzz itself and this. But.
Sounds very appealing.
Like a lot of these, and you know, back in the day, they kept, you know, I know who Dominion. Folks to rubber or whatever has the cleanup day. There's someone Jamie. I've been doing all that back as well.
I don't know how far they come down though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, never know. But it's a shame you stop on some of our streams and look in these streams, what's people's done, throw down. I done found, uh, and of course I caused outside a safe that was posed called Law on that one and Transformers. They got stole and deadwitty and they dumped them in Black Creek at the house.
Steal them just to steal them.
Well, they say they know who took them because they're trying to get something out of it to recycle. We just do it about a hundred yards downstream from some of these bridges and they'd be fairly clean.
It was coming down there, freaking out, completely all getting wiped out.
That's true. It's going to really pick it up.
Back in the day.
They get cleaned. They're getting cleaned now.
All your stuff coming down my way, that's the problem.
I'll give you a lift and pick up stuff in the bathroom now. Thank you, Royce. Anybody else got any question?
Thank you very much. That's all?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One of the ones you asked, who wants that?
Well, we did pretty well with the ones we've got.
Thank you. That's what we want.
All right, very good.
That's it.
All righty. Anybody got any question? I think this was good. I think this adds a different. It's still not me, but you know, when we go through the budget and the CIP meetings, we got money on our brains. Here we're talking about how more future stuff and I guess we do it. How will, would, would this information be recorded? And in some type of form that we can reference?
We'll have it on the website.
Okay.
As far as the presentations from today, all that will be on the county website for the citizens to reference and then the board reference as well.
Okay. So as a short term planning, I guess that happened, is it, is that one of our?
Seems to be the biggest thing.
Biggest thing we need to work on?
It's a common theme that I heard during the department budget reviews as well, looking at those frozen positions and also looking at the departments trying to keep up with the demand for services. And I think you also heard about the need for some backups. And think about what our HR director was talking about and then the department managers echo the same, same thought concept. And that being, the phones ring constantly and it's not a bad thing. We're here to serve the citizens. We are, that's what we do. And it's not, not to complain about that, but to think about how to effectively answer those phone calls and make sure they get proper answers. So we know that's an issue. And then the other thing is that DMV select position. You know, I, I couldn't just go in there and start doing transactions. They have to go through the proper state training in order to do that. And then, you know, I'm starting to think, okay, how do we connect those dots? And what would seem reasonable to me is if we could get a full time position administratively to help with that, they could also help uh, backfield to help out Debbie and Ashley to cross train a clerk. So you can have some continuity in your board meetings and, and you know that Ashley will be out soon uh, on a medical issue and it's not her fault. That's what we have to do was, is deal with those staff vacancies coming up. And then we've also heard about the community development office and how important that position is. So I do suspect that you, you county administrator, we need to spend a little bit of time and thinking about how do we check the most boxes? How do we make the most bane for the buck and taking care of those priorities? And you know, input from the board, input from the staff. And you know, hearing from our citizens as well are the things that they may think that we need to do a better job of. All that helps build a better HR mod, uh, mod, uh, plan and have the right staff in place to take care of those needs.
Well, that's all the things we can consider during budget time and working through.
What depart, can you just, what departments do we have coming up next Monday? Just top of your head.
So originally we had community development and building department, but we moved it today, kind of. Um, so at two P M. We have public works, two twenty, we have parks and rec. Two forty is the animal shelter and then we have a big gap for the brochure at three forty, which I can contact her about moving up. Um, I was thinking about reaching out to the departments I could have made today to cover down those open slotted times. So it gives them another opportunity to present.
Do we have, do you want the constitutional offices too then or? Treasure and sheriff, oh, yeah.
Opted not to participate.
Treasurer, sheriff?
Well, treasurer, she, she originally was, um, going to present today, but due to recent events.
Yeah, I'm just trying, so is she?
And the sheriff, same thing. They were going to present today.
Said not to participate is a commissioner of revenues office and a Commonwealth attorney.
So you're trying to get the other ones for next one. Okay. Sorry, I was trying to reconcile between what I heard and what's, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. What was the weather report?
All right, uh, here's the weather report. Uh, Kent just participated in the eleven o'clock briefing. And he said, uh, uh, latest information is four to six inches of snow starting earlier than what was forecasted earlier. It looks like it might start here around sevenish uh, tomorrow morning. And he says, uh, probably be a nasty night tomorrow night with the temperatures, you know, around uh, twenty degrees. So again, Mr. Chairman, four to six inches starting around seven, uh, tomorrow.
I always hate making these calls. We know we can get here. It's the public that'll come to, so that's all.
I think we want to move it.
Okay, it's going to be cold, ain't, ain't nothing helping. Okay.
Twenty two and I had tomorrow twenty seven.
Yeah, and I think it's not only the citizens, but you know, we had the power outage. We, if we end up with a power outage here, then you end up last minute trying to move stuff and it's then the employees who are trying to deal with all that, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah.
So it would go back a week?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I've been communicating back and forth with the, with the county attorney and kind of just thinking about some options and looking at the, the legal aspect of it as well. And I did confirm with Mr. Gore, um, to your credit, in your rules of procedure, it's very articulate in there as to what happens. And it says in there that for inclement weather, the chairman, uh, can, uh, move the meeting. But in this case, you've got the whole board, so it's even, even better. But what the, um, your rules of procedure say is any items on the agenda include in public hearings automatically roll forward a week to the following Wednesday at the same time. So if the chairman so desired to follow the letter of the law, uh, you could roll the meeting simply forward one week to next Wednesday at seven and we would not need to re-advertise those same public hearings. Okay, so what we would do with staff, if you opted to do that, we would contact the petitioners to make sure they knew. And then anybody else that had business on the agenda, we would email them and just tell them the meeting's been moved if that's what you want to do.
So that would be at twenty six, seven o'clock right here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, seems like the right thing to do.
Right, you don't want to travel.
And just FYI, uh, I've also communicated with a candidate that you're considering hiring for the county administrators uh, position and that candidate is also available to attend if you want to take that action. The contract is being, um, reviewed right now by the county attorney and you'll have that really soon, maybe even, maybe even today.
That's all the more reason to move it. So you wanted to travel, maybe it was to come. That's a good point.
All right. It's been moved. Uh, twenty six, seven o'clock right here. I guess there's, since there's three days in a row, there's no way of comparing any of this stuff on one day.
Was it three days in a, wait a minute, what, what was the third?
On the twentieth. Then we got, playing on Monday, right?
It is three days in a row.
Wait a minute, I don't have the.
Budget work session is Tuesday and then the board meeting on Wednesday. Mr. Morris is correct.
Twenty four, twenty five, twenty six.
What's the time?
Two to five on Monday.
Two to five Monday.
Oh, why don't I have?
Yes, Monday is two to five. Uh, that's correct.
The only thing it changes is Wednesday.
Yes, I said, if we could like put them all on one day, I don't know if Joseph's schedule works and we do just to do wrong.
Yeah, just to make sure we all on the same page, Monday is, is the way it's scheduled right now. It's two to five. And then Tuesday is nine to twelve. That's correct. And then the board meeting at seven P M. on Wednesday.
What, remind us, what, what's the agenda for Tuesday one? So we just covered the agenda for Monday. What's the agenda?
For Tuesday? Okay, Tuesday is a budget workshop number one. And what that agenda looks like is you would have a presentation from the school superintendent as to the school board's budget request. Okay, you would have that first. And then, um, we would also look at any, um, we would officially give you the outside agency funding request. That would be all the agencies that is requesting funding for FY twenty six. That's not a county department that has told us how much they want from the board. We'll give you copies of all of their requests. Uh, Pond will go over revenue projections for you for the new fiscal year, uh, mainly talking about the big ones like real estate, personal property and, and those, uh, local taxes. And then, uh, we would also get input from the board as to what your budget priorities are before we put the draft budget together.
We ended up falling three days in a row, but it's the same meetings we've planned on having anyway. They just got moved, they just got moved around due to the, due to the weather. I mean, it's, they're all full, they're all full times, so. They'll just keep us focused by having them close together, frankly, so. It seems fine. I don't know. I don't, I'm good, I'm good. I mean, it's like I said, it's the same amount of time at the end of the day. It just moved them around. I mean, I don't mean that, it's the same amount of time in total. I just moved them around. They're good stuff. We need to do it. It's, what do you do about the weather?
And we, um.
I know, but this.
Advertise all these special, uh, uh.
There's no good answer.
Meeting on Monday, the budget meeting and then.
Yes, sir. Monday and Tuesday have been duly noticed and then Wednesday we would just freshen that up. Even though, um, we're allowed just to roll the Wednesday forward, uh, what we're going to do is we're going to treat it like a, a new notice. Uh, it's what we'll do to make sure we have no issues and for full communications.
Yeah, and I'm sure Wayne will make a point of commenting it out too for it and help, and help us. Well, but also even just on, on your Facebook and website too, so. I think people will be looking for the, expecting it to move frankly, based on the weather too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll also put some, uh, notices on the doors as well for tomorrow.
That's a good idea.
We know it's confusing and we appreciate the board's commitment. Um, we know you put in a lot of hours too and I had to freshen my calendars this morning to make sure that, that I knew what we'd had rescheduled and, and to make sure we had current information to give you the.
It's, and it's better to make the call early, I think.
All right, if anybody else, you have a name, we'll, we'll turn this thing. Stand by for Monday.
That's right. So we'll get busy notifying everybody that had business before the board tomorrow night so they know.
Doctor two, right?
We have the two public hearings. Uh huh, and we know already, uh, this worldly, uh, told us that she couldn't be here tomorrow night anyway because she'll be out with her V I duties and we'll notify everybody that was on the agenda.
Don't remember. I thought to you, but I haven't heard of, I don't, I, I talked to you about it, but I don't remember him follow, I don't remember getting a follow up about it. I talked to you, but I haven't heard of, I, I talked to you about it, but I don't remember him follow, I don't remember getting a follow-up about it. Think, I don't think. Yeah.
The smell.
No.
Represent, represent.
Oh, oh, okay.
Alright, I got you, I got you. I know what you referred to, but no, I didn't get a follow-up.
You're darned.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention today.
Yeah, I'd be fine. I, I'm still fine with whatever you recommend, but.
I'm not psychic.
Give me a little more there, hold slicer.
You want me?
Papers, I'm gonna let you just.
Last thing I dealt with was the smell.
Forgot I walked over there.
Be gone, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's nice.
It were, yeah. It helps me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know.
Well, then.